Mrs. Massey, we're back from that recess to reset our audio equipment. Thank you for your patience. Senator Perez, we left off on you on questions for the panel that was here this morning.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. My apologies for being a little late today, but I think a lot was already said. And, you know, in looking over the information, I just want to also get... So because this is a new site and it wasn't evaluated along with the Matrix study, the Matrix study that was done, I think it's important to, you know, have a whole checklist of comparison, right? So what are the pros and the cons? And, you know, for instance, one of the reasons, one of the problems with the Eagles Field, right, was, you know, of course, the land issue was a big problem. You know, that should have gone back to the original landowners. It ended up getting not returned. And the other thing was the cost, right? The agreement that was made, or at least what we saw of the stipulations, was that, you know, it was, at the time, it appeared that the people of Guam were going to pay for the cost, but yet the military can take it away at any time, right? That was in the details. The devil's was in the details. And so I think we have to have all this information out on the table. We need to see what is, you know, apparently, we're only seeing a part of the information at this point. I don't, like, I would like to know, you know, the cost, for instance. You know, when we talk about this is a facility for generations to come, so is the debt. The debt is going to be with us for generations to come. And so, you know, we're not a rich community. You know, we're struggling. We're a struggling community. And so cost really has to come into this picture. You know, what can we afford, right? We all want the best, for sure. And, you know, I'm listening to the, you know, the testimony provided. You know, we need to have access for all people here on Guam, all people. I've been through a situation, my father passed away, and to have to go through that medical system, it's difficult, even here on Guam. It's a difficult situation to have to go through that and advocate for your family member. And so whatever we can do to ease that, ease the access to medical care for our people here is critical. I understand the urgency of building a hospital. Yes, we're all here, that's why we're here. That's why the community is here, because we see the urgency. But I would like to see all the information, too. I think the community deserves that. We need to see everything out on the table to make the most informed decision, because, again, you know, what can our community afford? Yeah, and so every day, I mean, here, Administrator Laimposadas, I mean, yeah, we want to get it built tomorrow, for sure, a new hospital tomorrow. But we have to, we have to also expedite the information, too, and not hold back on this information. I feel like there's something missing here. Before we move forward in this bill, I think we need to have that information.
Senator, I think the problem is the governor's fixation on 100 acres.
Sorry, yeah, I was just generally making a comment.
Oh.
I was making a comment, sorry. Okay, yes, okay, my apologies. Yeah.
Order, please. Yes, we understand. We're going to hear everyone's testimony.
Madam Speaker, yeah, maybe we'll just, I'd like to hear more of the testimony provided.
Senator Perez has the floor, sir.
Yeah, so one of the things perhaps I'm alluding to is like, this is not very far and it's in the back road. It's not very far from Eagles Field, right? And so, yeah, just, I guess, have a lot of questions about, you know, what, how is this in relation to, you know, for instance, the Military Defense Agency that they're planning here on Guam? You know, that'd be nice to see the context, because the military buildup is a huge part of Guam, right? So we want to see how this plays with the plans for the military buildup. I think that's something that I would like to see, you know, as far as who does, what is, who does this serve, right? And understanding that nuance, I think, is really important. Okay, and, yeah, thank you, Madam Speaker.
Mrs. Massey, Senator. Okay, and again, thank you to the panel. We're going to hear now from another panel, beginning with Joe San Augustine, Veterans Affairs, Guam Office of Veterans Affairs. Are you going to testify? Victor Duñez from Inilahan, Benny Roslin, Serena Paulino, Jeffrey Kasaka, I think, yeah, It's supposed to be Mr. San Augustine, but you're saying you're yielding your time to Mr. Flores? All right, Mr. Flores, please proceed. No, no, he's way down on the list, so it will be someone else. Mr. Flores, please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, Senator Fisher, for being here the whole time so far, you and Madam Speaker and Senator Barnett. And thank you for joining us, Senator Perez. I hope that the other senators that are not present are in support of the bill 184-37. My name is Christopher Camacho Flores. My father, Henry Tenorio Flores, is a living, original landowner of Eagles Field. As a matter of fact, where Eagles Field is located at, 12 and a half hectares is his. Okay, and it's on government, federal government land right now that the federal government has seized from the government of Guam, because the lease agreement between the Navy Department and the governor fell through, okay? And the reason why that fell through was because of the 36 Guam Legislature. They killed... Wait a minute, ma'am, are you going to interrupt my testimony or...
Yes.
Please let me testify.
Please, on this, on this bill, because we've already...
Well, I'm giving you history. You talked about Eagles Field. You mentioned that it wasn't you guys that killed that deal. I'm trying to, I'm trying to correct the record. Can I speak without being interrupted?
I'd like the facts, please.
Pardon?
With facts.
Yes!
Yes.
I just said with facts. The legislature killed the deal.
That's not the facts, that's incorrect.
Yes, it is, yes, it is. As a landowner, it is. Anyway, let's move on. Let me, if I can testify, please, because you even misspoke in the beginning, okay? You said that the time the people of Guam knew about this lease was when the legislature presented it to the people of Guam. No, it's not. The governor has made it clear from the beginning, when she was trying to get that property, that it was going to be a lease with the federal government. Made it even clearer to us landowners, the only way that she was going to get that property was through a lease. That's it! It was a lease, that was it. She even ran on a reelection on that purpose, on that ground, that she was going to lease that property, and she won by landslide. That's the fact. There was only one way that property was going to be given to Gulf Guam, and that was through a lease agreement. If the Gulf Guam did not lease it, it goes back to the federal government. The landowners will not get their land back. And yet, I know that Senator Barnett was running during that time, because he was a member here when we were testifying as landowners. He wasn't a senator yet, but he had a picture taken of my cousins signed there, returning the land back to original landowners, right there where my father's property is, that he sold. And there's a house built right there, right across from GWA, GPA headquarters. That's a fact, right, Senator Barnett? You had a picture taken right next to that sign, where it says, "Return lands for the people of Guam." That's a fact, correct? Okay, you don't have to answer it, but the main thing that I'm getting at is, there was no way that the people of Guam, us landowners, were going to get that land back, period. And the governor made that clear to us. The only way that we were going to get any land back was either through a land exchange or to compensate us. It may not have been the fair market value, or there were some landowners that wanted, my relatives, the Chaprano family, that wanted to continue to fight to get their land back. When it was already written in the wall, there was no way that we were going to get that land back unless Congress changed the law. And there was no way that Congress is going to change the law, being what China's being up to. And I testify here before you, Senator, Madam Speaker, and you made a promise that you were going to do everything within your power to fight to get our lands back. But I haven't seen a resolution from you to Congress, to Congressman Moylan, in trying to get our land back. You have been silent on that issue. And so, moving forward again, we've lost that land completely. We're not going to be compensated for it. We're not going to be given any land exchange, nothing. And the governor didn't even promise that. That's what she was trying to work on. The other thing is, just to clarify what Senator Barnett said earlier, the governor didn't tell us to come down here, sir. The governor didn't tell us to come down here. She asked us to come down here to support her bill. Nobody tells me where to go, where to testify, whatever. I come on my own free will, as a citizen of this island, okay? Nobody tells me where to go. The governor didn't tell us veterans to come down here and testify. She asked to come down here to show support for her bill, and that's why we're here, okay? So don't mince words, because, you know, I know you're a radio personality, and it's easy for you to mince words, and I don't like that. And I think, I agree with Senator Fisher, this is a house divided. I can see from your sessions, this is a house divided. You guys need to get your act in order if you're going to really support the people of Guam in building this hospital. Get your act together. Focus on your house. Don't focus on the governor's house. Wear one hat, be the speaker. Don't try and be the governor at the same time. You want information on the weeds? Don't be asking about what the veterans' hospital is going to look like. We're right now focused on building the hospital at that location, so we can expand other medical facilities, which will hopefully include a veterans' hospital there, a veterans' clinic, because that clinic up there at Seabock is 6,000 square feet. You cannot expand down there, it's on a cliff line or a hillside. You cannot build up because of the airflow from the traffic flow for the airlines, okay? So if we build it at Mangila, whatever you want to call it now, because it's now no longer Eagles Field, there's property there to expand. Go 16 acres over there at Epa Point, you cannot expand it. We already have problems trying to just park 1,200 employees. There's no parking spaces up there. You cannot build up. The weather elements over there, the acidity from the ocean, we already learned that from the first Guam Memorial Hospital that was at Epa Point. We built another one over there, next to those four towers that, you know, in years' time, those are going to collapse as well if they're not properly maintained. But that hospital is going to be right next again to the ocean, where it's going to be bombarded with salt spray 24/7. Here's the other thing that I'm concerned about. I'm tired of this fear mongering from the doctors. "Oh, every minute is precious. Oh, it's so critical that it's around the other medical facilities." Well, guess what? We have ambulance services now that take care of you, right, when they respond at your residence. We have the greatest firefighters here, and EMT specialists, when they respond. Back then, in the 60s and 70s, when the ambulance came, that's all they did, was transport you to the hospital. Now, they have life-saving equipment in that ambulance. They have trained physician, or not physicians, but EMT techs that can provide the vitals and what they can project to the hospital as they're being transported. So it's no longer an ambulance where you just get in and they just take you over to the hospital. It's a life, say, advanced life-saving transportation. That's why they have all that equipment in there as well. So don't tell me that because every minute is valuable or whatever, you can build that hospital right next to the Dr. Shea's home or Dr. Guin's home, but if your time on this earth is up, no doctor will be able to save you. And I'm a God-fearing man, and I believe in God. And if your time is up, it doesn't matter if it's 10 minutes away or one minute away. If your clock is up, your clock is up. There's people that's died on the operating table. So it doesn't, don't tell me this, that we're going to build the hospital there at Epa Point, because, because of all the medical little facilities around there? We've always talked about what's best for the people of Guam. I'm glad the mayor of Inilahan brought up the point about the landfill. The roads were supposed to be fixed, well, partially fixed. The bridges were partially fixed, but yet, how much longer before those start deteriorating because of all the trash trucks going up and down, back and forth to that landfill? Stay in your lane. Senator Perez, you want to talk about, you want all the information? You need all the information to make a decision? Let me tell you something, I was trained in the military, okay? A commander makes a decision based upon all the information that he currently has, not waiting, oh, what's going to happen there, what's going to, what's the situation over there? No. And when our general tells us what the mission is, we don't ask him, well, what did you discuss with the other generals? I want to know all the plans that you have with the other generals. No, we start planning what we were told to do. So let the governor do her planning, you do your planning. There's only two things that you guys really have to stay your lane in. Funding, finding the money, and making laws. Those are it, that's it. That's your job as legislators. Find the money, find the resources, and make the laws. Why are you getting into the weeds about contracts and leases and all that stuff? That will come, that will be afforded to you. But you don't want that upfront. You want the cost, yes. You want that upfront. What's it going to cost to build this hospital? Okay, we're only talking about building the hospital now. We're not talking about building all the complexes. But, you know, the other thing is, Gulf Guam needs to get out of this business of renting. Public health rents up there at ITC. The Department of Land Management rents up there at ITC. The Office of the Attorney General rents up there at ITC. Why is Gulf Guam in the rental business? Why can't we have this medical complex and get all those renters out of there and get it back on government land, where they don't have to spend money as us taxpayers paying for rental fees? I can't wait for Land Management to have their building built up there next to Hilali Shopping Center, because that's where Land Management is supposed to be at. But why is all our medical agencies out leasing? When we can have this medical complex built, we'll build the hospital first and foremost, and then after that, let's expand the public health over there, mental health, behavioral science, so we can get out the rental business. That's where you save money. And you talk about build it and they'll come. You're dang right, they're going to, you build it, they'll come. Look at, look at the soccer field up there in Harmon. We've had quality FIFA matches up there, and these Asian countries are coming to Guam now, because they know we have a quality FIFA-qualified soccer field. We've been in the business of talking about a convention center, building a convention center here on Guam, but it has not happened. Where's our convention center? Cavus Field House. You want to have a concert, indoor concert on Guam? Cavus Field House. You want to have a big basketball tournament where other Asian countries can come? Cavu Field House. We're Chamoros, we can dream! And I don't know where Ken Longuero or Dr. Guin's saying that, you know, pipe dreams. Why are we limiting ourselves to minuscule dreams? We're Chamoros, man. We can dream bigger. We can build better. So don't, don't tell me this thing about, you know, oh, pipe dreams, oh, build it and they'll come. They'll come, trust me. And last thing that I want to point out, we were building that Gold Star Monument during the 36 Guam Legislature, and there were some of you that were opposed to that monument being built there, because of some over walk, crosswalk, that was supposed to be built between Chamoros Village and Skinner Plaza. Well, that's been in the pipe dream for, I don't know how long, but you don't want to say no to veterans, because I'll tell you, we will come together, and you don't want to fight with us. You don't want to say no to a veteran. We're not going to build that veterans' clinic right now and then. It'll come later, and we're going to live with that Seabock right now, because we're patient. But in the long term, we do need a veterans' clinic that's going to service our roles, because our roles are continuing to increase. We've had a lot of soldiers come back from Afghanistan, the Gulf War, and they're veterans. And I'm wearing this shirt, because it says, "Wounded Warrior." Well, guess what? You'll never see our wounds, because our wounds are in our heart and in our minds, and you can't take that away from us. I'm a retired veteran. I get full service at Naval Hospital, they better. But my other veteran brothers here that only do two years, or only did their time and did not retire, they're depending on veteran healthcare, quality healthcare. And that veterans' clinic that's going to be built, that you have in your plans right there, that's going to serve them. It's not going to serve me. I did 20 years, and so I deserve nothing but the best, which is just like the active duty, which I can go to Naval Hospital without a doubt, anytime. But I'm here fighting for my fellow veterans that didn't serve 20 years, because not everybody is called for the military service. They may just do their time, and they're good with it, or they've experienced a grave injustice into their thought processes, and they have PTSD, and they cannot continue their service anymore. But yet, you don't see those wounds, because only them will understand those wounds, and only another veteran will understand those wounds. And if you're not a veteran up there, you will, you will never understand our wounds. So I ask you again to support this bill, forget about this thing about drive time and, and all the medical, little medical facilities around Tamuning. Build it where it needs to be at, where we can expand, and also get the other government agencies out of the rental business and into government land. What is so hard with that? I apologize for my outburst, but it's high time that we quit playing around, playing these games, and let's build that hospital where it needs to be, where we can expand on it, and not listen to a few doctors, because, oh, every minute counts. We have competent EMT specialists on those ambulances right now, as they respond to a call, and they provide medical care on the way to the hospital. We cannot build a hospital at 16 acres, where you cannot expand, you cannot build. You already have a problem with parking. Go to the GMH right now. The incoming ship has to park near Jones Town, over where the Oka Towers are at, down along Paris Acres, because there's no parking. It's an insult, really, that we have to discuss the weeds. But if you want to see notes on everything, you as a senator, you're in the wrong business. Let the executive branch do their part, and you do your part as far as passing laws and finding the money, or questioning the cost. I have no problems with that. But when you start demanding you want to see all correspondences, emails, any transaction with the federal government, with the VA, who's going to pay for it? Who, what's the VA? Let the executive branch do that. That's their job. That's the governor's job. And I hope the people... And I hope the people of Guam will mark this down November 1st. Because when you have your other public hearing, I will be here. I will be here. Any public hearing you have on this hospital, I will be here. Because I already lost the first fight. And I'll be damned if I'm gonna lose the next fight. Because now, there's no land ownership involved. There's no land ownership involved anymore. Now, I'm fighting for my veteran brothers. To where I know that if that medical complex is built at Manilo, we can expand and build the veterans clinic next to it, down the road. Once the governor finds funding, and I know DOD will help us out. Veterans Affairs will help us out. I know that, for a fact. DOD and the Veterans Affairs, they don't turn their backs on us. But I hope this body here doesn't turn their back against us because that would be a fatal mistake come next year, November. Thank you for your time. I've concluded my testimony. I gotta get back to work. I'm a limited-term employee. I don't have a lot of leave hours. I took leave to come here, to testify, which I shouldn't have to. Thank you.
Sidoz Maasi. Victor Duennas.
My name is Victor Duennas from Inalahan. Thank you, Speaker Theresa Stilahi, Senator Fisher, Senator Sabina Perez, Dr. Chris, Senator Malafonction Burnett. Sidoz Maasi. I'm here in support of Bill 184-37. And the reason why I say that? Because I am from the south side. I wanna be closer to the central side. Build the new hospital with the veterans clinic together. I am support with that. Build a new hospital on a red dirt or, or the agaga. Find a red dirt and build it right there. But just build that new hospital because I'm supporting that hospital. Yes, I heard a lot of doctors build that hospital at Oka Point. They have their own clinic there. They wanna be closer to them, to there. Why don't they move down south and see how much we suffer down there? Traveling to Tamuning to get to Guam Memorial Hospital. And yes, when you have a clinic there, I experienced this. When they meet my mom up there at Guam Memorial Hospital, they're calling for the doctor. Three hours my mom been waiting. The doctor never show up because he's taking care of patient in his clinic. So I don't care how much they say they wanna be closer to the hospital to save life. Yes, I understand that. Everybody could save life. There's an ambulance in, all the firefighters are trying to save life. But when you're in critical condition and they're calling you at Guam Memorial Hospital, they're asking for their doctors. Sometimes they get long hours just to get to the hospital. But we found out from the nurse, they say, oh, he's taking care of the patient there. And yes, I understand that. But nobody's bringing this up. They're just talking, they wanna be close to a new, to a hospital, Oka Point. Build it right there with the old Guam Memorial Hospital. I understand. But there's no, it's not enough spaces right up there. We experienced that from the old Guam Memorial Hospital. There's no parking. But in Manila, you could expand all those parking you want to fit all those patients that are coming in here. The VA clinic up here in the Ganya Heights is too small. It's a parking problem too. Every time they build a clinic, it's not enough room. We have to walk far to get to that clinic. Because sometimes it's full. Those are the problem there. We have to fly. I'm a veteran myself. USMC. And I'm proud to say, hurrah! But sometimes it's a problem. Because sometimes they send you to Hawaii for one day because they don't have a doctor here. One day, I went to Queen's Hospital. They take me and they refer me to go back there for more treatment. But I refuse not to go there because it's too far to travel to Hawaii. So right now, they're working on my case. They wanna send me back for an operation. But I refuse not to go. Let's do it here in Guam. Why do we have to travel so far? Build a new hospital with complete equipment so you stop sending patient to the Philippines, Hawaii, Los Angeles, or whatever place. Let's stay here in Guam. Build that hospital and take care of the patients so they could stop traveling off island. Sidoz Maasi. Mararama Salama Po. O Waisam Zucini Do. And hopefully, they feel all this. Before the senators should be pressing up here. Why is only 1, 2, 3, 4? I want, we elect no senator. I voted for you guys. But I want every single senator up here so they could hear us what we're speaking about. But it's every time we come here for a hearing, sometimes it's 1, 2, 3. What happened to the 115 senator that I'm not seeing up here? Thank you. I think I took all your time. Hutseis pitot, agaga. The central part. Sidoz Maasi. And yes, let me correct this. Build it in a government property. Adios.
Sidoz Maasi, Mr. Duennas. Mr. Benny Roslin, I don't see him here. All right, uh, Serena Paulino.
Hafadee na Anjusi Serena Paulino. Tata Inalahan zu lo samasago giza Tamuning. Um, I'm here today to read a testimony on behalf of my auntie who couldn't be here, so I'm just gonna go ahead and begin. Hafadee en buenas, honorable senators. My name is Angelita Paulino Mindiola. I asked my niece Serena to present my testimony in favor and support of building a new public hospital in Baragada. I apologize for not being before you due to health reasons. I'm originally from the village of Inalahan. When I was still in my teens, my father, Jesus Paulino, bought land into Muning to build a house because my younger sister Linda was sickly and had to be admitted to the old GMH almost every week. It was a burden to our whole family, but my father, Jesus, did what he had to do in order to care for my sister. We also housed other southern families when their children or relatives needed a nearby place to stay while their loved ones received care at the Tamuning Hospital. Since the pandemic and up until now, I had to be hospitalized several times at GMH and almost died. While being hospitalized at GMH, it was easy to see that Guam desperately needs a new hospital. The building is so old. And so that's why I was happy to hear that our governor was moving forward to building a new hospital complex in Baragada. I thought of my family in Inalahan and how healthcare is finally moving closer to them. How it would be a bit easier to take our families to the hospital. I pray that you put our people first and think that a new hospital complex is needed desperately. Doctors are asking to have the hospital complex built closer to their homes because of precious time needed to attend to their patients. And I agree with them. Time is important to our southern people. Time is important to get patients on life-sustaining machines. Time is essential for our loved ones to have access to a hospital complex that is built closer to those living in those southern and central villages of Guahan. A hospital complex where urgent care is accessible. There are many clinics in the village of Tamuning and Dedodo that are open and available to the people in the northern and partly central areas of our island. Put fa but, as you ponder your decision, I humbly ask for your support to build a new hospital complex for our people of Guahan. I ask that you put away political lines, personal vendetta, and everything that may inhibit the progress of our government to move forward in building a new hospital complex that will be centrally located for all the people of Guahan. I may live in Ipapa Estates, but my heart and my family are from the south. I am a southern manamku who may not be very loud, and I don't go running to the media or social media to express myself to make my complaints heard every day. I'm mostly quiet because I want to be respectful. I have faith in our governor and all of you senators to do what is right for all of us. I have campaigned for many of you and have secured votes because of my confidence in all of you. Today, I humbly ask with confidence that you help make this hospital complex a reality and have it built in Baragada on government land. I ask that before I die that I'll read of the good news that a hospital is being built closer to the southern villages of Guahan. Before ending my testimony, I would like to thank all the healthcare workers, especially Lillian and the GMH team who took care of me and worked under poor hospital conditions. They should be applauded for their commitment in providing the best healthcare under such dire conditions. Put fa but, hasutoro itata gisengsung siha. Datata hatza inuebu na hospita gita lu nalugat giberagada. Esti sempr mashihuet para todos itata Guahan gisan hadza, san caten, san lutzen, san sen lagu. Put fa but na para fan i politica za para in na maulek toro i decision mizu. Para toro itata Guahan. Supporti i governa... Sorry, dispenser. Governa, governa ta za hatza inuebu na hospita giza Baragada. For the record, I am in support of Bill 184-37. Dunkulu na Sidoz Maasi. Si Angelita Paulino Mindiola, GDOE Administrator Retired. Sidoz Maasi.
Sidoz Maasi, Serena, and please tell your Auntie Angie, Sidoz Maasi. Jeffrey Kusaka.
Hafadee, Speaker and Senators, and all the other senators not present today. I know you're listening out there, and I want you to listen hard because... I wanna share my experience. I've been in the dark days. I was normal before. As you see, I have challenges. Some may see I'm a happy go-camper out there, but deep inside, it's not like that. Speaker, and some of you senators, when I came back and we were in the camping trail, we invited you guys. We asked you guys to support. You came along the path. What happened? When you guys won, you stabbed us in the back. But that's not what I'm really here for. What I'm here for is to share my experience. I started my career in the 90s with the federal government. I was part of the National Chamorro to help fight for these rights behind closed doors. Even if I knew that it was wrong for me to be doing some stuff, but I tried to do it legally and morally as I could. 2000, we got rifted. I joined the guard. I came back. 9/11 happened. Before any deployments, I enjoyed everything like most people do. Fishing, baseball, softball. You know, I made the O-Star. I like fixing cars. I'm a mechanic by trade. After 9/11, or before 9/11, I joined the guard. 9/11 happened. I didn't know what the future looked like. However, I was fortunate enough to come back and work for the federal government. I continued 10 more years in the naval security section as a police officer. And then from there, I moved on back to the transportation field up at Anderson Air Force Base under 36 naval engineers. However, I've gone through three deployments, seen the good days, and I've seen the very bad days. We lost two of our soldiers in 2013. That will never leave. Prior to me leaving, my son-in-law and other soldiers were going through a lot of challenges from the deployments. And I told my battalion commander that if the system is broke now, what is there for us when we return? Well, you know what? Today, the system is still broke. You guys don't know what war does to one person. If you have not lived with it, I'm talking about your wife, your children, your mother, your father, someone you stay with. You will never know that pain. Yes, I understand. You go through other tragedies, car loss. But I'm speaking on behalf as a veteran and have wounds of war. It would never go away. Many ask, why am I not working? I can't. I have to work for myself now. Because I have problems working with people. And some of you guys, I trusted you guys. It seems like there's a few that when you put in office, you forget about everything else. Do you guys think, some of you guys think your home front is straight? Or your closet is clean? I ask you guys, look in the mirror. Because I look in the mirror every day and I ask myself, what is it wrong that I do every day? And I try to make it better. Eagles Field was shut down. You know what? We're not gonna dwell on that no more. We need to move on. I have a son that's in the service, 15 more years. And what is he gonna come back to? GMH? Why do you think all these people leave? And it's not because of the governor. It's not because of the legislature. Because the system is not making it better for us. But you know what? We put you guys in there. The people of Guam put you guys in there. Yes, we have our party lines to work with. But when you're in office, you're there for the people of Guam, not for me, not for her, not for him. But for the people of Guam. Yeah, I may be out there on social media talking about this and that. But when someone kinda look you in the eye and feel what we're feeling and stop looking at the calendar or the TV, then maybe you would understand. I respect all you guys. But we're here in the front of you guys, talking to you guys and pleading. We respect, or we ask that you respect the same way. Look us in the eye as well. Feel our pain. Because I'm here, not up there. You guys, I know, you all know I support this administration. But you know why I support this administration? And I support the legislature that works for the people of Guam. Is because back in 2005, our gov, our governor then was Felix Camacho, who came out to Africa to visit us. Fast forward today. Fast forward today. Not much has changed for the veterans. But I tell you what. Since this administration took over, there's been hiccups in the beginning. However, it's a lot better. And you know what? I'm going to give credit to my wife, who retired from the court, was asked to come back and help the people of Guam. And she did. She rolled up her sleeves. And she's now at the Veterans Office trying to fix all the disarray that was done for many, many years. And I understand why now all these veterans are disappointed at that state office. But you know what? I told my wife, do not give up. And I can say that if any of you have not visited the Veterans Office in Assent, shame on you. What do you guys care? You guys go to the cemetery when someone dies, give a flag, give your condolences. It's too late. The time is now. We need it now. As a reminder, the three branches of government. Senator Fisher, yesterday, I was watching the debate or the Bill 9 or whatever, that fireworks bill. And you hit it right. The legislature is the first branch of government that should be passing these laws and let the executive branch execute the mission. You cannot drive two steering wheels because you'll crash. And that's what's happening here. If someone wants to drive two steering wheels, but it's crashing. Your time will come when you guys want to run for higher office. But please afford our governor and our lieutenant governor and all leadership put in position. Give them that respect to run that position. And do yours. You know, one asked, why didn't I support my second cousin for governor? You know what I said? Because he's not ready. Our governor is doing fine. Your time will come. Because you may be good as a senator, a congressman, but you're not ready for a governor. And that's to include this current body of legislative government. Your time will come. But I ask for you guys, both parties to come together. And let's unite for the people of Guam, not for individual agendas. Because you think you're better than this or better than that? Go look in yourself in the mirror and you tell me that you've not done something wrong in your life and hurt somebody. Because I have friends out there that have gone through that process. It's even worse than just losing loved ones, you know? Most especially our battle buddies that will never come back. Eugene Ogun, Wayne Flores, Samson Mora, Fernandez, Ferran, even family members of Fisher. And many that have gone and paid the ultimate price. I'm lucky to be home. I'm really lucky after three deployments. I asked my wife, can I go the fourth time? She says she won't find me home. So I had to make a decision. But not only that, the wounds of war prevented me to do so. But you know what? Today, I'm grateful for this nation. I'm grateful for this current administration that I received the help I couldn't get while most of our soldiers got in Hawaii and elsewhere. And you know what? I wish he stayed because when I went to AMC Clinic for help, they had nothing for me. And he's going to stand here and tell me that this medical complex is a waste of time or... You know what? We're not asking to build it right now. Let's start with a hospital and work the services around it. And you know, whether it's this administration that's going to complete the process to that or the next, allow, please allow the administration and the executive branch to function in what they're voted to do. Senators, you guys do the same as well. You do the policies and pass the law. Stop digging into the executive branch and the judicial branch to try and do their jobs as well. Because that's not how it works. That's not how democracy works. You talk about debate the other day. When you guys, when situants are talking, you guys are blocking, cutting them off. Is that what you call democracy? Perspective? Respect? This legislative hall, when you guys conduct business, you guys have lost respect amongst each other in here. You know, Chris, or Senator Barnett, I love you and your personality of radio talk shows and everything. I laugh. I even got recorded videos and stuff like that. But you know, now you're a senator. I expect, my expectations of you is more. And between party lines, I'd like to see more respect amongst you guys. Bipartisan, I want to see that when important things that need to happen for the people, like today, tomorrow, yesterday, before we lose another soul. And I've lost soldiers, not only to the battlefield, but suicide. And that hurts. It deeply hurts. You know, the guards getting ready to deploy again to the Middle East. What do we have for them when they return? What do you have for us right now? That from after 9/11? Nothing, there's nothing really for us here. Nothing. But at least, this administration is having the courage to make those dreams happen. Field of Dreams, yeah. Field of Dreams is... Everyone has a dream. And this is our governor's dream. Allow her. Your days will come. Your legacy will come. Your children will come, will have their legacy. But when it's time. Your legacy is you guys, your legacy now. And what you do today, moving forward, the world watches. Guam watches. The children watch what you guys do and say and how you respect each other in this body here. We're all not perfect, I understand. But for God's sake, we put you in office here. This is temporary for you guys. Respect each other. Who says men don't cry? I never used to cry. I never used to tear. But what you guys are doing is making me tear more because you have no cohesiveness. When we raised our hand to go to war, I didn't ask you permission. I voluntarily told myself to go and do it because our nation called for us. And this is the kind of... Thank you we get when we come back. Oh, thank you for your service. Thank you for your service. That's it. When you're done, next place I see you guys is at a damn cemetery. I'm sorry if I'm taking long, but I've had to address my feelings, my thoughts and ideas. I've been quiet too long. I've been in dark stages. And I have a lot of battle buddies that are still in those dark stages now. I'm fortunate that I've medically retired with benefits at 100% that most of my battle buddies don't have. But I'm here today also to speak on behalf of some of them that have not or can or will not return. Rest their soul forever. Thank you for your service. But we still have a battle to fight for those that are still struggling. And why is it that we have to beg for a complex or a new hospital? Why? Yes, I understand all the laws and everything's in place and everything. First round is done. Okay, I understand. And I know our governor accepts the fact that she needs to make corrections and move forward in unity with all branch of government and to do this for the people of Guam. Senators, I ask, in closing, thank you for allowing me to speak my piece today. And I humbly ask that this body, unanimously bipartisan, support 184. And let's get the process rolling. Let's worry about the financial and the amendments to the amendments as we move along the way. Because we can't all fix that in one day. And I trust in God that this body, this legislative branch, the executive branch, and I'm praying for the judicial branch side, most especially our Attorney General, is struggling. We all need to help each other out. And lastly, the dream can always come true if you make it happen. And you know what? At the end of the day, maybe most of our people that left our island because for whatever reason can come back to Guam and make Guam their home again. Not only them, but everyone else around us, our American community, Palau, FSM, all these guys, our brothers and sisters in arms that they can't even vote for, you know? Go to war. I ask that we consider them as well, that call Guam home. Thank you, and Sidoz Maasi.
Sidoz Maasi, Mr. Kusaka, Sidoz Maasi. Mr. Roygen Boa.
Good afternoon, Madam Speaker and Senators. First of all, thank you, Jeff, for opening up and sharing. I know how difficult that can be. So, my brother, I'm here for you too. We sit here providing testimony, and it seems like we're trying to solve world peace. For crying out loud, it's a hospital that shouldn't take as much effort in convincing elected leaders that this is something that the people of Guam absolutely need. I spent time in the military as a combat medic. I've also spent time as United States Marine. And there's one old saying that basically says, many people go through day by day wondering if they've made a difference in this world. I don't have that problem. I am a United States Marine. I would go to battle for any one of my brothers and sisters in uniform. I would go to battle for you, the people of Guam. I have no qualms. I have my demons, just like Jeff has. I've spent the last three years working with a lot of veterans that have been dealing with their demons. Fight through suicide, fight through suicide ideation, and keep them off the brink. Keep them here with you. Some of these individuals are your relatives. I won't share any names. But we've dealt with more than 500 veterans and their family members coming, seeking help and guidance and making sure. And what we've done is made sure that they are still with us here today. We don't have an inpatient clinic for veterans dealing with PTSD, anxiety, depression. At this moment, the VA sends our veterans off-island for extensive treatment. The advantage that they have stateside is they get to go home on Sundays, take what they've learned and practice with their families. Our veterans from Guam don't get to fly back home. They stay there. Some veterans go out there for weeks. Some go out there for many months. Yes, we can dream. We can dream that someday there'll be a veterans clinic, a veterans wing. Because Lord knows the federal government won't build one. And there's no talk of them building anything anytime soon. With some of the federal partners that I've been working with through my nonprofit organization, they're watching this very closely. They're interested in finding out where they can help, provide funding, who do they need to speak to so that we can have our own inpatient facility. And like Jeff says, our brothers and sisters in Palau, the FSM, when they have to seek medical services, they have to find their way to Guam, pay for room and board, and just all of that, just to get their medical care. Oftentimes, they don't get reimbursed for that, for that travel expenses, just to get here to Guam. I could come to you with a very passionate speech about all the pain and suffering that a lot of us veterans have had to go through. I'd rather cling on to a dream than empty promises or not even anybody talking about solutions. It's very easy to point out the problems. Problems with budget, problems with location, issues with this, that, or whatever it may be. But I'd rather focus and ask this body to focus their effort on finding solutions. If not here, then where? If not because of this reason, then that. If there's any one reason to go into debt as a government, a hospital is a good place to go into debt. I don't have a problem with that. It shouldn't be a problem for anybody to argue with, saying, you know what? I'd rather owe the government or the people funding, money, whatever it may be, and go into debt. Then, let's face it. The building hall that we're talking in here, we know that this body can say, you know what? If we want a nice building, we can get our heads together and put a beautiful building like this together across the street. We want a museum, we can put a museum up. There was no objection to that. That came up in a heartbeat. But here we are arguing about a hospital which everybody has to go to. Everyone will have to go through those doors at one time or another. And we're arguing about it. It's uncalled for. So we can sit and argue about the budget. We can sit and argue about all kinds of things. But I'd rather have you guys sit there and at least consider, let's make this happen. Let's break ground and then figure out everything after that. We've done it on so many other projects as a body. We've seen after Typhoon Mawar, we are a very resilient community. We will pitch in. If we have to pick up those shovels ourselves, we will do it. The golden hour was mentioned earlier. I don't think it takes more than an hour to get anywhere on this island. So yes, as a combat medic, I know every minute counts. With more of our military buddies coming to our island, they've got helicopter medevacs that can take place. Identify villages like Yumadik in Alahan, where a helicopter can be launched, landed, picked up, and then brought to the new hospital. Technology is all around us. Better healthcare, longer lives, saving the lives of your relatives, those that are still in service. And I continue to do what I do. And I call Guam my home because I love this place. We've lost many veterans relocating to the United States because they've all heard from their friends in Washington and Vegas, there's better healthcare. You'll get your 100%. You'll get it quick. I walk in the door, and I've experienced it. I've been stateside, walked into Tripler. Man, I have not received my knee braces. I have not received this. Sir, come back at four o'clock this afternoon. It'll be ready for you. Working through the system here, completely difficult. But we can knock it, we can pick up and criticize all day long, but that's not going to do anything. Solutions is where we need to be focused on. Every term, every legislature is defined by at least one bill that makes or breaks their career. This will be that one bill that will determine your future. I support Bill 184 in all that it hopes to be, in all that it is going to provide for our people here on the island of Guam. And without getting too emotional, I do this because I too have family members that I've lost recently. That if we had the specialists, if we had more people here on the island of Guam to help care for the people that I've lost, perhaps they would still be here today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Deputy Director. Stephanie Flores. Please state your name and position.
Yes. Good afternoon, Madam Speaker. Members of the 37th Guam Legislature present for this hearing on Bill 184-37COR. My name is Stephanie G. Flores and I'm a resident of San Arida. And although I am a government of Guam employee, I want it to be clear that I am testifying today in my personal capacity as a citizen of the United States and resident of Guam. I support the passage of this bill as presented. My grandmother, Christina Duñez Ariarte Witt, is a direct heir of original landowners whose Tizen and Radio Baragada properties have not been returned and will not be returned as access, but rather retained as the Tizen Airfield and the Admiral Nimitz Golf Course. And our family was not compensated for those properties. I support this bill not because the lease or sale will benefit me or my family directly. Incidentally, it remains unclear exactly who can and cannot benefit from the assets held in trust by the Ancestral Lands Commission. But because the sale or lease of these properties are meant to facilitate the construction of a medical complex, a project that will benefit all of the people of Guam. I have had serious medical challenges for most of my adult life, the specifics of which are not necessary to go into at this time. It suffices to say that a good portion of our population are experiencing or have experienced similar challenges. I have been fortunate in that my family and I had resources available so that I could seek the care necessary at an off-island medical complex. Several members of my family have also enjoyed that privilege of getting health care at these particular facilities. I say privilege because that is indeed what it is. A privilege born out of the availability of resources that are not enjoyed by everyone. I see no reason why all of our people should not enjoy the same type and quality of care that one experiences when you go to a medical complex. Every day, our residents are referred off island, not to hospitals, but to centers of excellence. Centers of excellence are medical complexes, which do not only have hospitals. They have doctors' facilities, outpatient clinics, specialty clinics, and all other ancillary services co-located with a hospital. A medical complex with a community health center, mental health services, and other ancillary services co-located with a hospital just makes sense. In the fourth quarter of this last fiscal year, over 49,000 people on Guam were enrolled in Medicaid or MIP. It is no secret that the poorest among us face significant health challenges at alarming rates. An important part of preventing the worsening of medical conditions is follow-up care post-discharge from hospitalization. Anyone who has ever been hospitalized knows that one point that is stressed to you more than once is follow-up with your primary care physician. This is easier, especially for our community health center patients or our patients who do not have primary health doctors. If the follow-up appointments can be made at the same location as the hospital prior to discharge. Any parent that has ever had a sick child, who's had a fever, knows that having a sick kid is a scary thing. Many of you are parents, and I ask you to take a moment and recall the very first fever your first child had. Can you recall how helpless you felt, how frustrated, how you would do anything to make your child better? Imagine if your child had a serious medical condition that could not be treated here only because of a lack of facilities. I like to think that all parents want the best possible care for their children, rich or poor. Every week, I am asked to buy tickets for car washes, bar fundraisers, or lunch plates to help facilitate families to take their kids off island for medical care. I'm sure they would prefer to have their kids treated here if we had the facilities and the doctors to treat them, here at home where they have family support. The same holds true for our aging parents. A new medical complex will make that possible. A new medical complex would make it possible to have a broad spectrum of specialists available to serve all of our people. We have sent a lot of our sons and daughters off to become doctors. And I'm sure some of them want to come home, but a lack of facilities make it difficult. A medical complex should be the minimum standard that we want for our people. I'm asking all of you to support this bill and to support the raising of the standard of care for all of our people, not just for those who can afford the plane tickets and other expenses that go along with getting care at first-class facilities, centers of excellence in Manila or on the West Coast. Until then, I will continue to purchase the fundraising tickets to help our people get the care they need at state-of-the-art facilities abroad. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Flores. We have 15 more minutes. I'm going to ask Dr. Shea on the Zoom. He's ready. He's been on hold. We can see you. Please proceed.
Okay, let me unmute my video here. Thank you, Madam Speaker and Senators. I've been waiting for about three, four hours and thank you very much for allowing me to listen in. My name is Dr. Thomas Shea. I'm a Boa-certified OB-GYN. And I've been on Guam for 27 years. And I have extensive, extensive experience in healthcare at the hospital level and also at the clinic level and public health level. I'm currently the president of the Guam Medical Association and current chair of the OB-GYN department at Guam Memorial Hospital. I'm also a Navy veteran and I'm also a patient. I'm here today to speak on behalf of many of our healthcare providers who are currently in clinic seeing patients. And also on behalf of many nurses from labor and delivery, nursery, OB ward, and other around GMH, who are actually, you know, afraid to speak up because their fear of retaliation from the administration or be looked down upon. I can also speak on behalf of the thousand of women who have spoken to me as well. Over the last 27 years, I've seen a lot of patients, their families as well. Let me first by addressing some fallacy. One of them is that currently I'm here in Honolulu, Hawaii. I'm networking with and recruiting and actually talking to our off-island specialists. Dr. Hirata and I, we just met. And we will share some of the facts later. But I will tell you the truth here. Even here in Honolulu, Hawaii, we have several hospitals here, big medical centers, Queens, I heard that mentioned quite a bit there, Straub, Kapilani. But even in Honolulu, the state of Hawaii, we still have to send patients off island. So when the governor tells you, if you build it, you don't have to leave. If you build a complex, you don't have to leave Guam for healthcare. That is not true. Whoever is telling you this, you know, really, you have to take a step back and hold it with a grain of salt because that's just not true. And my whole purpose of being on Guam over the last almost three decades, three decades, for some, a doctor who's not from Guam, I don't think there's a question of my commitment to help improve healthcare. The population on Guam is just not large enough for the subspecialist because the procedures being performed are very delicate. And we have to do it almost every day in order to be proficient in it. Even when a guide on, we recruited a guide on for our clinic as a rotating specialist, but Guam just would not support a large enough cancer in a GYN oncology to be on Guam. That's just not possible. Robotics surgeries are now, you know, the mainstream and that is really difficult to be here on Guam as well because you have to perform those cases day in and day out. So again, I want to echo Ken Leon Grob what he said about the infrastructure. Before I go into the slides, what Ken said is that we built up the infrastructure over the last 60 years in Tomuning is absolutely correct. GIDA is absolutely correct to say, and I heard over, you know, the governor's presentation in the hospital, that GIDA would not be able to ever replace the medical infrastructure that's built over the last decades. I would say 30, 30 years, that's what I've been seeing. Since I arrived on Guam by the US Navy, I have seen Tomuning developed in medical infrastructure. The things we do for patient is actually amazing right now. All-patient surgery, laparoscopic, minim invasive surgery, all the surgery center that's built around the hospital have really done well. And well, not because of money, well, because we have saved lives. So EPOE is built for this. The medical infrastructure, the complex that you're all talking about, it's already built. It's in Tomuning. All we need really is a hospital. EPOE Point is where it should be. So I don't think GIDA wants to destroy the medical infrastructure that's already built around EPOE. And I don't think they can rebuild everything and put it in Manila either. I do appreciate both the mayors from the south. When they talk about recruiting doctors that dedicated to come to Guam. And I hope they remember me as well because I was down south many times, especially with the drive for justice that we performed in the village of Miritzo and also in Inarahan. I was also there helping with Inarahan Public Health. I used to drive there every weekend to help the people there. So I hope the mayors, you know, they want to improve healthcare down south, please contact me and we'll get together and how to make improvements there. What the southern clinics need to do is open an urgent care center. And that's one of the solutions that I would suggest and I can help them with that. The urgent care center down south will allow the people down south to be healthier and stay away from the hospital. You don't want to go into the hospital, ever. If you can avoid going to the hospital, do so. And the only way to do so is prevention. If we can get you the care that you need next to you, right next to your village, that's even better. So I think we can work together and open our urgent care center down south. That is the most important thing. I also will say this to our fellow veterans. I'm a veteran. The naval hospital brought me to Guam and I served my active duty. I served my country here as well. And because Gulf Guam has not done well in healthcare, look at GMH. Why would us veterans want the governor of Guam to get involved with our healthcare? We have to demand better. We do not want another hospital built and have it end up like GMH. The management of GMH has to change. Regardless of the location of the hospital, the management politics has to be taken out of the hospital. You can build a clinic anywhere you want, Manila, you can build a veterans clinic there. Do so. It's okay. But the hospital should be in EPOE for the entire island for access. Now, Bill 184 is not the answer. Now we can go into the slides and I can go through it pretty quickly. Now, I have to repeat some of the slides here because I know that Senator Perez has mentioned that we need all the information on this new piece of property. And I do agree with her because there's not much information that's been brought up, especially with the military missile site that's going to be built right next to it. In fact, this property that they're talking about, and I drove up there and I'd gone past it, is actually beyond Eagles Field on your way to Adakau. And I think it's right across of Hawaiian Rock or near there, and it's still pretty far away. So the drive time analysis, all we have is evidence bases from the Matrix study and we shouldn't ignore that study. Next slide. The location of the property that's being gone through the Matrix study has chosen to be three top sites. The three top sites are listed here. Eagles Field, Adakau, and EPOE Point. And EPOE Point is actually, next slide, is one of the best accesses for the entire island of Guam, not just for people down south or, you know, north or central, wherever it is. When you talk about central, you don't want to say, look at the entire island and go, that's a central location right there in the middle of the island. Central meaning the best place that's accessible for the population of Guam. And we don't want to be biased to Tomuning, sure. We don't want to be biased to the south, biased to the north, but we have to ensure access. And we have right in front of us a Matrix study that tells us that, hey, this is the best site for a hospital. Next slide. Now, when you look at this, this drive time analysis, some people say ignore that. Well, why would we ignore that when we spend millions of dollars on this study? We need to really consider this because the drive time analysis is a key point on where you build a hospital. Even in Honolulu, Hawaii, San Francisco, UCLA, we talk about those hospitals. We want to build a center of excellence. Look at St. Luke's. It's right in the middle of busy Manila. And you know, it's where people can access, right? So even Asian hospitals, same way. The key here, the evidence shows us that a multimillion study has told people Guam that we pay multimillion dollars, that EPOE is the best site. And that's evidence-based. It's not just hearsay. It's not Dr. Shea saying it. It's not anybody saying it. It's from the Matrix study. Now, when we talk about facts, I know Adalou want to reference this as well. The complex that you're talking about, and I know GIDA has mentioned it, that the complex is a center of excellence. Now think about that for a minute. The complex is already built in Tomuning. We built that over the last three, four decades. It's already there. GIDA admitted it. The medical industry is already there. Not just that, it supports the tourism industry. When you have tourism that's coming to Guam, that's where our main bread and butter is. And you may be down right now, but imagine a hospital close to the tourism industry. That's even better. Now, next slide. This slide right here, you can't just look at the center of the island and go, okay, there's pinpoint that spot. When you call it a central, central location is central to the entire population. What location is going to benefit the entire population? And that's EPOE Point. And that's what this study, the Matrix study has told us. It's EPOE Point. Besides the fact that Adakau or Eagles Field, you know, those are beside the facts. Just focus what the Matrix study has been telling us. Now, next slide. Now, as the chair of OB-GYN department at the hospital, we deliver over 2,000 babies and over, I would say 2,500 moms will come through labor and delivery, OB ward. And, you know, they usually bypass the emergency room. They go straight to labor and delivery. So there are none OB-GYN living in the vicinity of Manila. And you can say, well, they can move to Manila. They can go ahead and move there. Well, sure they can, but still you still gotta have access to OB-GYNs. We already admitted we have a shortage here. And we keep talking about this dream, right? You know, you don't think I want to recruit OB-GYNs to Guam? Of course I do. You know, after 27 years, I'm still the youngest Boa-certified OB-GYN with the longest history dedicated to the island of Guam. I deliver over 11,000 babies. So my profession is women's health and delivering babies. I heard one senator mention that this hospital is going to be built for the future generations, for the unborn. Well, now you're talking about my arena of care. When you talk about the unborn, not to mention GYN women coming in for gynecological emergencies. I am talking about the unborn. I'm talking about moms in labor that comes in. The emergency room physicians that's there will not be able to handle it. So OB-GYN must respond within 10 to 15 minutes. And oftentimes, as we all know, when women bleed, they can bleed a lot of blood within minutes. And yes, we can argue back and forth about the doctors got to be close, ignore that, don't page into that. But the fact will tell you, in medicine, response time is key. And that's what the Matrix study is telling you. So don't ignore that. Now, in the governor's presentation, her presenter company that there's always doctors in a hospital that will take care of you. So don't worry. That is really an incorrect assumption. There may be ER doctors, but there are no OB-GYNs in-house. There are no pediatricians in-house. There's no general surgeons in-house. And there's other physician that's needed that's not in-house. Emergency room will be staffed. That's not a, that's not a, you know, that's a given. But you're not going to have these specialists that are just going to take a women and children that's in- that's in-house. Now, if the governor wants to say all doctors must stay inside the hospital, they can't leave twenty-four seven, good luck to that because there's not enough doctors to do that. And you can hire all the Gulf Guam doctors however you want. You're still not going to have enough. And I can tell you that from experience. I've been here for twenty-seven years. Next slide. Now, this is a photo of Inarahan. And Dr. Ho is right. They built a beautiful center there. And, you know, that's built actually on these, on the property that I actually worked there many, many years ago when I was in the Navy. And I love Meritso. I love Inarahan. It's one of the most beautiful villages. If you ever drive through there, and I would love to go back and help your people out there. And I do. I do. Drive for justice was something that, true to my heart, and I'm not even going to pediatrician. When the call for help, I was there for the people of Meritso and Inarahan. In fact, we dedicated a beautiful playground in there on behalf of justice. And I was there. So I would encourage the mayors of the southern side, if they really want to improve healthcare, give me a call. We'll sit down. We'll figure it out. But a hospital, you want to stay away from because in order to do that, you have to stay healthy. Preventive health is key to staying out of the hospital. And I, I, I have some idea that I can share with you. Now, in Hawaii, for example, I visited all the hospitals here over the last week or so. And I've talked to people here, talked to administrators here. There are no public health center anywhere near a hospital here in Honolulu, Hawaii. None. You talk about people living down south, how they can reach us. Go down to Wainai. Imagine a drive from Wainai, somebody in labor, a woman who is in labor, how they're going to go from Wainai all the way down to Kapialani in town? That's, that's a long drive. And there's no labor and delivery anywhere close. So if you want public health centers to be developed, I think it's a good idea to work with the providers here so we can help you develop care to reach the people of Guam in those far-out places. Now, I heard, I think it was Stephanie, that talked about the continuity of care. Now, you know, I've been in healthcare arena for a long time. When you want true continuity of care, it's not through public health. No one wants to go through public health. The continuity of care is really through the private sector of the clinics. The providers who are near EPOE, the majority of the patient gets out of GMH, they actually follow up in the private clinics, not public health. Public health doesn't even accept patients when they are pregnant anymore, and especially not over twenty weeks. None. So if you want continuity of care, you need to work with the private clinics, not public health. Public health is closed on weekends and holidays. If a patient is discharged from, on a Saturday or Friday afternoon, they're not going to go see a public health on the weekends. And by the time they leave, they go back to wherever they are, they may not be in Manila. So how are they going to get a car to go there? But the private clinics are open, urgent cares are open on weekends and holidays. I would encourage working with them and get access to care through them. That's the best continuity of care that you're going to get. Now, next slide. This is an important slide. Now, this is a letter that I wrote to public health. It's not about money because this letter says that. I don't want money. I don't want to be paid by public health. When we had a cry for shortage of OB-GYNs, I rose to the call. And this was the letter that I sent to Arthur S. Augustine. I would volunteer to revamp your women's healthcare system. They didn't take up my offer. And this was written January, I think, early on this year. And this letter, I meant it. I see, see many people on there. And I'll provide it to, to legislature as well. You can read it. There's points on there that I really wanted to help to revamp the public health system so that there's more access to care for women. And I didn't ask for money. It's not about money. Twenty-seven years I've been on Guam, serving the people here, and I've delivered over eleven thousand babies. Many of them are tomorrow. So we talk about the unborn, the future generations. I'm delivering the generations already in the future. The babies I've delivered, I'm delivering them again and again and again. So the lives I've saved are actually talking to me. I'm almost finished.
Yes.
The next slide.
Pardon me, Dr. Shea. We have to end this. There's another hearing at 2:00 PM that the, they need to proceed. And I have to apologize.
Okay, I have one more slide to do and then that's it.
All right, one more slide, please finish because we have all, still a long list. And I'm going to have to apologize to all of them. Uh, please, please finish. One, one more slide.
Okay. I'm sorry, next slide. The medical education part, next slide. I'll talk about that altogether. When we talk about medical education, we talk about campus. I'm a faculty of the University of Hawaii. Uh, next slide, actually, uh, the University of Hawaii, John A. Burns School of Medicine. Sorry, the last, one more slide. Um, I talked to Dr. Hirata, who is also a faculty member as well. He's the only maternal fetal medicine specialist. And he disagrees with a hospital being way out there in Manila. And, you know, he is supportive of a hospital and he's willing to help us from Hawaii. And we have a network of providers here. And the reason is very obvious, patient access. We're not talking about doctors in here. We're talking about patient access. A complex is already set in Tamuning. Build a hospital within the complex that's already set up. Don't waste your money. Dr. Petiro, our urologist, also went on record and saying he supports EPOE. And he's our island urologist. So as a clinical professor of University of Hawaii, I would tell you that building a hospital in EPOE is the way to go. And my last comment to the military veterans,